Frank, are you on mute?
No, I'm not. Mike, can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you now. Okay. Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Present. All right, so this is our work session agenda and let's go to the first item, which is future work agenda, future agenda items. Mr. Conkle. Did we lose Tony somewhere?
Yeah, he was not on here.
I don't see him on here.
Okay, well, we all have them. So as he would say, good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. We have on our report here, we have the back, we have a, on February 23rd, we are going to do a Budget 101, Mr. Zook leading the pack. And then we have our goal setting session on March 3rd and March 4th, and everybody, I believe, is going to be in attendance on that. Then we have the upcoming work session on March 7th, where we have our joint meeting with the Planning Commission, review of the community survey, city setting speed limit discussion, street design standards are coming back, and load or road discussion. Is there anybody have any, anything else that obviously we don't want to add to this list, but if we do, we can add that to our list and get those scheduled as needed.
And Tony just hopped on. Tony, Denise just gave us the.
So, yes, Mr. O'Donnell.
I just might say that as my intention for tonight is to ask that we set over the discussion.
I was gonna, if you hold off on that, we'll get to that on the next item.
Okay, I just mentioned because I'd like to move it into the future agenda item.
I, I agree. Wait till we get there. Tony, did you have anything else you want to add that I gave your report? He's still on mute.
So, sorry, I was finishing up a call with Mike there.
That's okay.
I'm sure it was absolutely wonderful. I missed it. So I guess if there are any questions. Sorry.
All right, so let's move on from there. We have under discussion items. It's come to my attention that we would like to, there's two of us who would like to postpone item number three. And before we get into our presentation from Nate Kaplan, I'd like to just go ahead and dispense with that. Mr. O'Donnell would like to put that item on a work session agenda. Am I correct, Mr. O'Donnell?
That is correct. Thank you.
Is there anybody that would get to that?
I don't have my agenda right in front of me at the moment. What, what item we're talking about?
Memorandum of Understanding Sports Field Fees and Neighborhood Associations, item number three under discussion items. I, I will basically just speak to it for a moment. I, I really feel that it's important for us to have some discussion before we, we bring this forward to the next work session where we have public involved. I, I'm supportive of us engaging with the public, but I really feel strong that we need to have a discussion amongst ourselves first, so that we have a grounding and basis for where we need to go with this. And we haven't been able to really have that discussion as of yet. And there are so many facets to this that I, I, I feel that just jumping into it without sort of breaking it out where we can deal with it with each section, because not everything's the same on here. I'm hoping that that is okay with you all, that we, that we do postpone this. And I'm sorry for anybody that's online right now that came, you know, that's gonna, that wanted to come and talk to us about it. I see Cheryl on there, but I really think that we, we deserve to have a further conversation about it. Mike?
I agree 100%.
Okay. We have a consensus to move this and then we can work with Tony to schedule. Okay, so we're going to dispense with item number three and put that on a future work session as soon as we can, given our other workload items. And I'm, again, apologize to anybody that logged on. Just for general comment, we do have the discretion at work sessions whether we're going to take public testimony or not, because it's not a hearing, it's not a, you know, it's not an advertised public hearing where there's procedures and stuff. So we, we've been very informal about that. All right, so I understand we have Nate, are you here? Here you are. Hi, welcome. We have a presentation regarding Go Rail.
Thanks for having me, Mayor and Commissioners. Everybody, I appreciate the time. My name's Nate Kaplan with Go Rail. I'm actually in town right now. I'm the State Director for Oregon, Washington, California, Nevada, and Colorado. And so what we were set up and designed to do about 25 years ago is to be in communities that are rail-served or rail-adjacent and be sort of a liaison or conduit between the freight railroad industry and cities and counties and DOTs all across the country. So this is actually the first in-person, we call it site visit, we've done since the pandemic. So it's been interesting, nice to be back in Oregon for, after a few years. So we were created and set up by what they call the Seven Class One railroads, which are the biggest interstate freight haulers. And in your neck of the woods, it's Union Pacific and BNSF. And so we, you know, I understand Oregon City, there's, you know, quite a bit of active freight rail. And if there's ever issues that pop up, then you're not sure who to talk to or who to deal with. We're designed to help kind of cut through the red tape and make sure that, that your, your issues are getting heard and getting an answer in a reasonable amount of time of what's going on. It's kind of like how you folks are for your constituents. It's kind of like what we're set up and designed to do for Commissioners and Economic Development Groups and Chambers of Commerce. And so I'll throw it out there right now. So that's kind of, I'm just curious of how the city has ever had much interaction with the railroads in the area. And if so, you know, if it's been positive or negative, and then I'll give some other stuff after.
Tony, why don't you go ahead and answer that? We, we've dealt with the railroad a lot over the years.
Let's just see if John Lewis, John, you know, so, so, so a lot of our interactions has been through ODOT Rail. I know our Public Works Department has worked with, I'm just not exactly sure which railroad provider. We had some pretty significant bridge construction that has happened on one of the viaducts in town recently. John, you might know a little bit more about the context and the, the work that you've had.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, we're, we're a partner to the degree we can be a partner with the railroad. Well, they're, they've got the Amtrak station in town here as well. So we communicate with them, probably not as often as we should, so that we, that relationship could be better, I think. But yeah, a lot of freight goes through town here. So we've, or I guess I should say a lot of rail to Amtrak and rail providers.
Could you talk to them a little bit about our Quiet Zone project?
Ooh, love Quiet Zones.
Yeah, so we've been pursuing a Quiet Zone, and we've been funded for a Quiet Zone. We're waiting for the state, the state's going to deliver that project. At the end of the day, they, they deliver it because it's a federal-funded project. But we've got two crossings, one's a vehicle and pedestrian crossing, the other one's a pedestrian-only crossing. And the, the idea would, we'd get that built as soon as we could. So we're, I don't know if you've got any pull with the ODOT staff who manage those funds, but we'd love to talk to you more about that if you could help with that. But yeah, it's a, it's a good project. It's, you know, Oregon City's got some topography challenges and, and 10th and 10th and Railroad there is one of the, one of the more difficult crossings. So we'd like to make that safer for our community. And at the end of the day, we would like it to be a little quieter in our downtown so that we could have a little more residential development in the downtown area.
Well, it's great to hear. In Quiet Zones, it's good that you're pursuing that because that can be a very lengthy process. And it's, I'm sure you've been dealing with the Federal Railroad Administration. The FRA has a lot of hurdles you've got to jump through and prerequisites because it's all comes down to safety, because they want to prevent any sort of injury or death from a pedestrian or a vehicle. So that's why they get those big loud blasting horns. One thing I'll get into, I'll probably jump into, I'll talk about it now since you bring it up. But one of the big points that we've been asked and charged to get to communities that have railroad crossings, especially ones that are problematic, is they recently passed bipartisan infrastructure law dedicated $6 billion towards railroad crossing improvements and what they call at-grade elimination program. So it's not very well-publicized, so that's why we've been asked to make sure that local and county and state officials are aware that these funds are. So $6 billion was carved out to be spent over five years by communities that have an interest in doing anything from as low as like a $50,000 grant to hire consultant to do an environmental review or scoping report to shovel-ready projects that are requiring over $100 million. All of that is being considered, and already the first batch, first year money was sold out last October. And the next round will be happening late spring, early summer. So if you have issues like that, we're also here to help. We boiled down the information and made it very easy to digest to see what cities would qualify and put together a checklist to see if it's worth pursuing. Because yeah, that money can go a long way, and there hasn't been that sort of funding since, you know, FDR. So when it comes to railroads, and so everybody's very excited to make sure that this money gets spent because all across the country, there is, you know, railroad crossings that are causing problems. And so it's a matter of kind of a first-come, first-served and competitive bidding process or application process between cities to get this pot of money every year for the next, you know, four more years now. So I wanted to make sure that was on everybody's radar.
Nate, what types of projects would be funded under that?
So it would be, you know, anything from a bridge where either vehicles would travel over or a pedestrian bridge where only pedestrians would, or combination tunnels that would go under grade, below grade, or even if what calls for gates, the traditional railroad crossing rate gates. But the FRA really wants to target, you know, grade separation. So I'm by no means an engineer. That's where, you know, whole nother shtick. And so if you have folks on your staff that are already looking at that, or if you need a consultant to hire, the federal government is, is pushing money out to do that kind of stuff. So that's the, that's, you know, the gist of it, mostly like bridges or tunnels there. And I, I have this, we have a lot of information sort of from last year because the new batch of funding doesn't get released until late spring, early summer this year. But we expect it to be very similar to the program and how it was run last year. I will show you too. I'm going to try to screen share. Oh, boy.
While you're doing that, we did have four at-grade crossings over the time that I've lived here, and we've closed two of those. One at 11th and Maine, and, excuse me, 11th and Maine. And we had one at 17th Street, and those have both been closed because they were deemed unnecessary and rather unsafe.
I see.
Two, two major ones that I don't see those getting closed. So at least the one major, I don't see those being closed at all.
Nate, what was the name of that program again? I, I was, I didn't.
Yeah, it's called the at-grade railroad, at-grade railroad crossing elimination program, which was part of the, the IIJA or the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. It's got a few different names. I am, I'm trying, I'm telling you I have to change my preferences right now.
Again, wait, I apologize for not having you here in person after we did all that correspondence with each other.
It's okay. I'm sorry. It's not for some reason that letting me allow Zoom. It's having a hard time letting me pull up. Is there any chance, I know I emailed a couple documents over last week. It's not letting me screen share for some reason right now.
Yeah, I can pull those up for you here.
Okay.
I wish some of the money could be used to help upgrade, upgrade our rail station.
So there is other pots of funding which are also in this document for, that we're not so much, okay, yeah, we can start with this one. But there is funding in this document that there's stuff called Chrissy Grants and other sort of infrastructure-related grants that are transportation-related. So if there are particular projects that you're eyeing, even though we're not really working on it, we can get more information. So Mayor, if you, we'll get to another chart in, in a minute. And if something like that looks like, okay, great. Yeah, here we go. Real funding issue brief. So here, you can see some background and information on the, the funding I was talking about before. Five and a half billion dollars over five years. We've got four years left. A lot of this is, that, like I said, we've been asked for some, you know, we've been asked to really focus on the grade crossing elimination program. But that's not to say there isn't passenger rail funding also available. And if you scroll down, please, you'll see how much money was actually dedicated to passenger rail. And there was a lot more freight stuff. And there's intercity rail, so you can see intercity passenger rail has over about, you know, $42 billion coming its way. So I got a feeling there's something there for what you're looking for, Mayor. And not to mention, you also have a new Congress member who sits upon the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. And so part of our goal too is to help educate new members of Congress, especially who sit on the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee, and make sure that they're aware of, you know, the importance of rail, both passenger and freight in their district, and to answer any questions and kind of help make this stuff understandable. So, yeah, I would say definitely take a hard look at this sheet. We're expecting it to look very similar. This is, again, was, we published this last year, but it's going to be pretty similar this year. And so this can give folks a head start. We've been asked to kind of help distribute this information to make sure that folks in cities all across America can start preparing for the 2023 application program that's coming up. Cool. So that's money. That's always a fun thing to talk about that I've never, we haven't been able to do for a long time, being, talking about money to, to that the federal government wants to spend. And now if, we'll do a quick look to at that first Oregon state-specific, yeah, state action. This is just a cool kind of background FYI information. There's 22 railroads that operate in Oregon. We have a lot of short-line railroads, which are, you know, some are mom and pop, you know, running very short distances. And then you've got the two class ones, which is Union Pacific and BNSF. And that kind of gives you a good little, that graph under the rail trap. And it is all the exports that go out by freight rail. And Oregon by far has the largest percentage of lumber and wood products compared to any other state in the US. And to kind of give you an idea of how poor and trains are in the state alone, it's hard to kind of wrap your head around the millions of tons of freight that gets moved, hundreds of millions. Well, what does that really mean? If you were to stop trains in Oregon for one year, you'd have to add 630,000 additional truck trips to move that same amount of freight out of the state, which you can imagine would be a lot of traffic and a lot of headaches, and not to mention more extra pollution. And then if you scroll down, please, you'll see a map of the current lines that are active in the state, almost 3,000 miles of, or almost 2,500 miles of active rail lines, actual steel in the ground.
Go back, Angelique. Go back, go back up on this sheet. There you go.
Yeah, there you go. So I was in Albany earlier today in Lebanon, and they have a couple of short lines there. They're very active in the area and, you know, huge spurs of economic development. I'm sure you're aware, there's a new intermodal facility that was built, about $40 million outside of, right in Albany, right outside there. And so economic development, it kind of comes hand-in-hand with railroads because of all the extra stuff that you could now do was not capable for, whether it's manufacturing or, or just getting products to distant markets. Yeah, and then, and then, so that's, I always love to hand that out to the folks because it just gives you a good idea of what each state looks like. And we have this sort of data for every state, if you're ever interested. And then I guess we get to the last sheet too, totally kind of shifting. We are also asked to get information out about the Ask Rail app, which is this free app that's been around for a while that the industry offers for public safety officials, mostly fire chiefs and police chiefs and sheriffs use this. And what it does is it gives them and their, and their employees and their first responders access to high-security level information about what is being moved on a train in the event of a derailment, which is very rare, but it's still, it happens unfortunately. But unfortunately, it happens less in America than any other country in the world. So this Ask Rail app is, you have to get a security clearance to use it, but we certainly encourage every fire chief and sheriff and police chief to have it. So if that, there was to be a derailment in your city, whoever gets there first can type the code into the app. There's a code on the back of every tank car and, and rail car, and it'll tell that individual exactly what's in it and what's in front of it and what's behind it and who owns it, which railroad and what shipper owns it, so they can safely get to the, and respond to the issue, you know, appropriately. So that's kind of a no-brainer. And it's, again, this is the type of stuff, information that the FBI has access to seeing whoever logs onto this because it's very secure. And, you know, you know, if that information ever got into the wrong hands, it would be, could be devastating. So, but something that your public safety leaders should definitely be aware of and, and hopefully train the rest of their staff to have that, especially if there is so much freight going through town. It's just good to have in case, and there was just a horrible situation in Ohio. I'm sure you may have heard of in the news this past weekend. They're still dealing with that. So in those sort of situations, you'd want to make sure you'd have this app to save time, depending on what's, whatever's happening. So I will leave it at that for now. You know, one of our big things is, is at this point too, you know, focusing on the new members of Congress. Like I said, we have a, a new one in your district and making sure she's aware and understands that, you know, the importance and the role that railroads play in the, in the community. And, and then at every level, just we're here to be a resource for you and your city and your constituents. If you ever have any kind of question, whether it's about getting hooked up to the rail lines or homeless encampment that is causing a problem or whatever, we can help find a solution. We're, we're always available for you. And I'm at the point of contact for Oregon, so always feel free to reach out to me directly.
Any questions, gentlemen? Go ahead.
I've just, one question for Nate on the Ask Rail component. Do you have to take the numbers off the individual car? Or can you just somehow identify the train in its entirety and they'll say, and on this, on this particular load, you have four cars that, that pose a danger?
I'm pretty sure you have to enter the actual, in the tank or the car that's having a problem. Yeah, I don't think it tells you by train or, yeah, movement, no. Because sometimes, probably the reason for that is things switch off so often. You know, sometimes they might have to drop a car and put it on a substitute, a train that's coming a couple hours later to move it. So, you know, it's not always predetermined, you know, how a train is, is not going to look the same in Oregon as it looks like in its final destination in Chicago, you know, it's, it, it gets shuffled up.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions? Captain Davis, were you aware of that app?
Hi, good evening. No, I have, we aren't. So then I'm aware of, so I'm going to look into it and get it signed up.
Very good. Good to hear.
Fantastic. All right. So much, and I hope that we get to see you next time in, in person.
You bet. And I'd say take a hard look at those, that grant money, and if there's anything there you think that, if there's projects in town that could use that sort of assistance, let me know, and we can help connect you to the right people, whatever the cases.
All right. Thank you so very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we are on to item number two. Presentation on Code Enforcement Complaint Process. Is that you, Captain Davis, and Mr. Kersey?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioner, we'll need Ryan to be the presenter, but good evening. Thanks for having us. As you were a couple of months ago, you asked to see a presentation on our Code Enforcement Complaint Process. So tonight, we're here to discuss some of our staffing, how it compares to other cities, workload, goals, and the complaint process from start to finish, all the way through the court process. And then we'll open up to any questions if you have. So I'll turn it over to Ryan Kersey, our Code Enforcement Manager, so we can start the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thanks for having us back. And I'm not sure if this is preloaded on here or I'm able to share this.
I'm sure you should be able to share. You're, you're a co-host.
Okay.
You can?
Um, let me see here. It will not allow me to share.
Yeah.
I have all those problems here.
Yeah, I can, I can pull it up for you.
Okay.
I'm also able to share. It looks like I can too.
You can as well?
Looks like it's allowing me to.
Oh. Would it be better if Captain Davis shared his screen of the presentation?
So Chief Band is shaking his hand, some kind of yes or no.
There you go.
All right. Can everyone see that?
All right, so this is just a brief overview of our current staffing levels. We kind of break it down by the actual job position. So up until January, we had 1.5 code enforcement officers. And with your guys' approval in addition, we have another person in training. So we're technically up to 2.5 full-time employees in code compliance. We still have 1.5 FTE for parking enforcement, one person in the office, and then of course, myself. So that's a brief overview of what we have right now. And then if you compare it to some of the, you know, more proactive agencies in the metro area, and then we included Ben as well, just because the model they use is pretty proactive and something that we have been looking at. Happy Valley has, you know, three officers in the field. They have one admin person. They do not have a downtown or parking area, so they have no staff for that. Like us, we utilize the CSO position, which is the Community Service Officer, part of their police department. They have some police functions as well as going through and doing some of the city municipal code enforcement and animal control. And then over at Ben, they have, obviously, a lot of the population there is, you know, more than double of what we have in the surrounding cities with us. They have five on their code enforcement team. They contract out for parking. They have three people for that. They have one and a half admin people in their office, and they have 12 CSOs through their police department. So, and that's a huge thing, and something we can talk about later, just how they operate that part of their program. But that's not how we're currently functioning with the code enforcement here. And so I want to break down the cases over the last few years and the total numbers from 2018. Obviously, you can see them on the screen there. They kind of rose up through the years of the pandemic. A lot more complaints came in, and then this last year, they tapered off just a little bit. And it also has to do with a little bit of staffing. And then in 2022, our top three cases, 47% was the parking and abandoned vehicles that were reported to us. And we had solid waste, 18%, and vegetation was 12% of that. So what's the overall goal? The overall goal for code enforcement here in Oregon City is to enhance the neighborhood mobility, educate resident educate residents to resolve violations through our voluntary compliance. Uh, if voluntary compliance does break down, then we'll move to a more formal enforcement case and follow the outlined procedures. So right now, we're operating off a complaint-driven uh process and doing some proactive inspections through those. Um, currently, most of the violations come in through citizen complaints, we receive them on the phone, um through the the Oregon City Request Online, and then also in person. Uh, code staff, we're going out to address a complaint. You know, we will take note of any gross violations at nearby properties, uh but we don't go check the entire neighborhood or scan through for an proactive response. Um, just, you know, with the staff we have currently, that's about what we can handle. Uh, with the addition of the staff that we just added, we're gonna be more proactive on addressing the larger code violations, especially in relation to the uh big damn properties in the city. Uh, and then also doing some more enforcements and kind of keep vehicles moving on the bluff and the north main street areas for parking time compliance. So when a call comes in, uh obviously, we just talked about in-person phone or email the My Oregon City Request, uh or we sometimes receive some from other departments. Uh, we review each one to determine what violations there may be. Um, if any departments it needs to be assigned to outside of us or through our enforcement. And then basically, we input that information to our intergov, uh it's two to be three one one program, and we assign it to our staff for initial site inspection. Uh, the first inspection will be conducted within twenty-four hours on most of those days.
Hey, Ryan?
Yeah?
Could you go on that last slide to sort of explain what it means to determine the department that it should be assigned to? Talk about a couple of those cases and and when we would send something to another department.
Oh, of course. Yeah. So when we get complaints, when we get complaints that come in, sometimes it may be something to, you know, they need a permit for those kind of things. Or they need to, you know, look at a sidewalk that they want to get repaired. So some of those things have to go through the public random way process to obtain a permit, get any appropriate inspections done at their property. Um, so we would assign those out to, you know, public works or engineering, or sometimes planning to involve, we have trees, we come down, just so that way everything is documented properly and permitted properly. So when we go out to do the site inspection, um our biggest thing is looking at a compliance timeline for what violations out there. Uh, so we're gonna go out there, we're gonna determine if the reported violations do actually exist. We're gonna attempt to contact anybody at the property and kind of educate and go to the violations to set up a timeline for them to bring that into compliance. We always take photos during our visit. We make sure to take them from the right of way, document any conditions out there. If nobody is home, obviously, people are at work, um could be on vacation, those sort of things. We do send a letter out to the uh property owner, and we talk about what violations are on the property. Uh, we talk to him about also setting up a timeline for compliance. We also do have kind of a timeframe based on what violation it is, somewhere between ten and thirty days. Uh, we will continue to work with all the property owners uh to tip compliance. We may adjust those timelines if they do make progress. Some of the more uh major violations we've found with properties that have, you know, debris, solid waste, uh junk vehicles, it takes a while for those to be removed. We understand it can't all be done within, you know, two weeks to a month. So what we want to look for is some sort of progress. So if they're working with us and they're getting the the most, you know, I guess, wouldn't say uh, you know, just getting the big violations out of the way and then start to work on the other ones, then, you know, we'll continue to work with them and set out different compliance dates. You know, usually about thirty days if we do see compliance. So if there is a communication breakdown um or no communication at all, then basically we'll do a reinspection uh to see if any progress is made on our initial compliance date. Uh, we'll note the current conditions, uh they'll be documented by photo, this is of course all the written piece notes entered into the system. Uh, then we'll be then we'll make a determination if we need to issue a second letter, which is our notice of violation, or we'll issue a citation and send it to our municipal court to be reviewed by the judge. You know, if they do get those things corrected, we will close the case out with compliance. So heading over to municipal court, the process there. Uh, if we do issue a citation, the property owner has the initial appearance per either hearing a plea of no contest or not guilty. Uh, for a no contest plea, our staff will present the facts to the court along with uh what we would like to see as a sentencing packet. Generally, our biggest goal is compliance of property. So we're not we're not looking for large amounts of money. We want them to put that into the property, get it clean, and then be on some sort of a compliance program. We can usually generally ask for twelve, twenty-four months of kind of longer compliance of the property and inspections by us, and the court will usually grant those um just to work with the property owner further. Uh, we obviously want to make um, you know, an assessment and ask for fair and, you know, reasonable fines in or dismissal at the end of that compliance time. Uh, for a non-guilt plea, the court will obviously set up a trial date for the case to be presented by a code enforcement and the property owner before the municipal judge. So our desired uh municipal court outcomes, um our goal on the court trial to openly present the facts and to work with the court and property owner resolution to bring the property into compliance. Some cases do not gain compliance, could go to an abatement process, which we would then have to go through and apply for a warrant to obtain a bid, and then go back on the property with another warrant, clean the property, all at the expense of the city. We would then go through and lean the property when that's when that uh is cleaned up and completed. Uh, we always continue to work with the property owners, even through a trial, um just to bring the property into compliance. So if it does go to a trial and they want to, you know, get some more time, maybe they cleaned some stuff up, the judge can, you know, obviously order those things, and we would ask for just a compliance timeline even to be granted that. So this is a recent case that we've had. It just got completed here within the last month. Um, this is up off a division near the hospital, um just a situation where it was a property rental and, you know, the tenants were not clean. Uh, there was a lot of junk, junk vehicles, other things like that, solid waste, some kitchen food debris. So our staff worked with the property owner. Property owner spent a lot of time and money to get things completed. Um, you know, the tenants had to be moved out so we could get things uh cleaned up and uh complied with. So good success case. And that takes the tour. Questions?
All right, Commissioners, questions? I can't see anybody because we're still on the sharing screen space. Mr. O'Donnell?
Can we stop sharing this? There we go.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you.
I think the questions about code enforcement have always been the same. Uh, there's been a concern that in matters of solid waste and vegetation, that they've been strictly complaint-based. And in the realm of parking and noise complaints, the question has always been coverage, specifically nights and weekends. Uh, where do we stand on those two items? Do you see us moving towards a code enforcement officer seeing a solid waste or vegetation complaint and taking unilateral action without a complaint? And what do you see in the ability of of our staffing to provide in the realm of parking and noise, night and weekend coverage?
Yes, but to address the first question, uh thank you Commissioner O'Donnell, uh one of the things we look at is kind of that, you know, how we want to see neighborhood livability. So if we're going in looking at a certain property, we do see some growth violations of the property. You know, currently, our staff will stop, document, try to make contact with the property and open up a new case. Uh, we are not, we don't have the current ability with staffing to stop at every house. Um, I think that also opens up another set of, you know, things to worry about, stopping at every house in the neighborhood if there are violations and kind of ranking where we would place those violations. You know, at what point, you know, would we be proactive, you know, over tall grass? Is it two inches over, half a foot over the regulation, um fire hazards, those kind of things? Um, I know site visibility is one that we would stop and take care of, you know, without a complaint, just because those are safety items for us. Um, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, given the number of uh solid waste and vegetation complaints, what do you feel historically has been the number that have not been complaint-based that have been initiated by a code enforcement officer on their own, percentage-wise?
Yeah, just looking at the last eighteen months that I've been here, I would say it's probably ten percent. Uh, the majority of everything that comes in is complaint-driven.
I'll let you continue with the uh answers on parking, noise, and weekend and night coverage.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Let me look at it real quick. So one thing, we've talked about this several times, um and and I do, I think sort of uh outside of being out in the street and and seeing what what our staff are doing, it it comes off maybe worse than it is. I I don't think that if, you know, our staff people, one of the complaints we always get is it takes too long. So if our staff in the morning and they've got ten contacts, they've got to go make that day. They're trying to get those resolved as fast as they can. So if they got a list of ten things they're going out to do, their goal is getting their ten things done, to deal with what's at hand. If they stopped at everything they saw while they're trying to get things done as fast as possible, there is that makes, so it's not, they just don't care about those things. And there are obvious things that come up, but but it's it's more trying to do to get the stuff in front of them done. Does that make sense?
Oh, Chief, I I don't think anybody's asking to stop at everyone. I'm asking for, I think what we're asking for is an exercise of judgment when you see something completely grotesque that needs to be dealt with. I I realize the process itself has its own handicaps. I've witnessed dried weeds thirty inches tall that the process does not deal with in a timely manner, but that's the process. I recognize the limitations of staffing, but I also would like to see, if you see a gross situation in a neighborhood, to exercise initiative and 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 move on it. And I'm not saying you have to correct everything you see. It's just uh, it's that very judgment that people get paid for.
I think Commissioner O'Donnell, what you're talking about is, what I was gonna use as an example, there is a piece of property on Malala Avenue that is a vacant lot, and every year the weed, the the grass starts up. It's a it's a very well-traveled thoroughfare. And knowing that we've had to go and talk to these people every year, to me, that would be proactive to say, by the way, you know, the property's starting to, starting to get, the weeds are starting to come up or the grass is starting to come up, because I mean, it got so bad last year, they could have, they could have bailed it. That's how tall it got. And I know that they see it because it's it's just, this keeps getting, you know, taller and taller. It's it's down now. There's a there's a track hoe, you know what I'm, I'm not gonna say the address or whatever, because the house burned down, but there's a track hoe sitting on it right now. And I just keep, I look at it whenever I go by, I think, well, how's the grass doing? It's, you know, it's not there yet, but it's been a, it's been ongoing for a number of years, even when the house was still there. I think that's what you're talking about, something like that that's pretty darn obvious. We've contacted these people before. No.
Yeah, I'm I'm talking about that. I'm talking about when when the situation such as thirty inches high dried grass represents a hazard, a fire hazard, a danger to health and safety, there should be a way to expedite that process and get it remedied.
Rocky or Mike or uh Adam, any questions or suggestions? Go ahead. Adam?
Thank you, uh and thank you, Ryan, for the presentation. I was just wondering if you could give a quick status update on the uh abandoned or vacant building uh program that we have recently approved, um if how that's going. I I, based off of the conversation we've just had, um I'm curious how you would get compliance with um um a complaint-driven process on this, if that is the case uh that has been used for this program or uh just how you guys are gaining compliance on this and making sure that people actually know about it.
Yeah, so one of the things we're doing is we're working with our IT department to add this to our website. So it could be kind of a one-stop, people that own a vacant property can register the, that's one of the things we find is a lot of property management companies will queue those nationwide. So a lot of out-of-state, those kind of things. So what we've done is we've actually been proactive in just anything we do to identify a vacant building or vacant structure. We've already started a list. We have about a dozen of them right now. We're going through each one. Uh, one of them, in fact, we contacted today, um, you know, working with their attorney to basically work with the property owners, bring everything into compliance. And it's kind of repetitive, like full circle. So we're addressing ordinance violations or addressing non-ordinance violations, like the PD, those kind of things that we don't have the enforcement tool right here to do with, but we have it in the vacant property registration code. So that's great to go through with that. And then also looking at it from the side of how do we present, uh or not present, prevent trespassing, people breaking into the structure while it's vacant. So making sure our police have the tools as well, especially in the evening hours or night hours, so they have the tools to make those, you know, contact enforcement be on the property. So those are all things that we've incorporated right now. Uh, we do have twelve properties identified, and we've been working on those right now. And that's and that's kind of a mix of uh ones that we've got through complaints and ones that we've gone out and identified.
Good, thank you.
Frank, did you have one, something else?
Yeah, I wanted to double back on the uh night and weekend coverage on matters of parking and noise complaints. Where are we at on that?
I think one of the things we're looking for, and I think maybe uh Captain Davis or Chief Band can can add to it, but one of the things was the um parking and study that you guys heard from at one of the last meetings from Rick Williams and his staff, and setting some goals on looking at, do we look at night and weekend coverage and those kind of things? And where that prioritizes. With our current staffing, we probably wouldn't be able to cover much more than some adjusted hours in the evening um without being able to look at, you know, additions for people working later hours or on the weekends.
I think that's a discussion that we're coming into the budget cycle. I think we need to understand what we need to provide that kind of coverage. Parking, you know, we've often heard it said, and everybody knows it, come five o'clock on Friday night, it's a free-for-all because code enforcement isn't there. So I mean, what do we need to do about that? Uh, we know, and I know, having been a former police officer, the police department, really, that that's as low a priority call as they can have almost. I mean, matters of public safety come first. They don't, this is not their favorite thing to do, and they'll do it as time allows. Uh, the matter of noise, I believe the police, the police department has responded. I don't know what we we have in the way of, does anyone have decimal meters, either code enforcement or the police department?
I don't know. No, no. So our our noise ordinance, which was updated, I can't remember how many years ago it was. It was not that many though. It was three, four years ago, I think. Um, the commission at the time, maybe it was longer than that. Um, uh, we discussed whether or not we go down the decimal meter route. And uh and we did not, chose not to. Um, so there's nothing about being within a certain decimal reading um for whether or not something is a is a noise issue. We don't get a ton of noise complaints. Every once in a while, something, I know there was recently one at a commission meeting, we don't get a ton of them that we can't resolve. Um, I don't, I think there's problems with decimal meters um for what the instrument is, how you read it, where you read it from and those sorts of things. Um, um, yeah.
Well, Chief, as much as I, Mario, we disagree on that decimal meters, electronic device, it can be calibrated, it can take a reading. You know, that I went through that here, and I was very sympathetic to the gentleman that came before us at the commission meeting. And actually, the the noise ordinance is stronger than that gentleman believes it is. If he can't conduct a normal conversation, then then that's a violation. But I mean, there's nothing better than an objective measurement that says at two hundred feet away, this is a decimal reading, or inside an adjoining house, this is the decimal reading. So maybe that's something we revisit. I'm more concerned, I I think those are infrequent, and unfortunately, when you get them, like the gentleman said, that usually those people are fairly unreasonable. And as you know, I have my own experience. The parking and coverage, night and weekend coverage, I really think that's a discussion we need to have. Is there value in that in freeing up our officers and in getting visible coverage? And again, we're coming into the budget cycle. Maybe I think that'd be an opportune time to have that discussion. Thanks.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I think part of the problem with the parking enforcement around the weekends is we have got to in inform and make our business Inform and make our business owners understand that on the weekend, that does not mean all your employees can park on the street. Because it's taking up space for the customers, which is a problem.
Yeah, and and we're all aware.
You know, like you said, we're, we may be ready for the discussion, but one of the recommendations was is that we have parking enforcement on the weekends. And I'm not, right now, I'm not comfortable with that. Uh, but I think we need to have further discussion about it. I guess my question has to do with. One of the places where we seem to have a bogged down has to do with the community development. And I understand that they were in the process of transferring some of the responsibilities or some enforcement issues to code. And I hope that that has happened because. They don't really have the bandwidth to do it. And part of the problem is, is that when there's been complaints that involve that, that's where it bogs down and we don't seem to get any forward movement. So has that happened? I was told this was in the process last fall.
Yeah, we've been taking some, you know, first step actions on a lot of the signed complaints and things that have come into the city here. Um, kind of taking it out of their offer and us making contact face to face with property owners, but you know, businesses, just bringing them into the regulations. And then ones that wouldn't be allowed to be permitted, we send them over there with a short timeframe to get the proper permits and get them put up proper.
Now, I know that when we send out and people come, new businesses come in and they get their business license. I know there's information sent out, but I can tell you that. The last three months, every new business that's come into town, they start putting up those flippy flags and, you know, I know that they got the brochure. As I was told, that goes out in the business license application, but you know, it's. It's it's one of those things where, you know, we could be a little proactive when they have time, if they see it, it's like stopping and say, hey, welcome to Oregon City, but. You can't have that, or did you think about another option for signage that doesn't involve, you know, a code violation or, I don't know. So I said, I'm hoping that that transfer took place because again, that's where we seem to have the bottlenecks. Um. The other thing that you talked about a little bit was, um, so I was trying to get clarification on your on your sheet with the code and parking cases. So you have parking and abandoned vehicles and that was seven hundred and seventy. So are the parking things beyond, they're not, that's not violation of parking meter zones. Is that something else? What what is that?
Yeah, those are complaints that come in that are strictly assigned to our code enforcement officers. Um, they're not part of the normal, you know, parking, you know, observations and checking meters and things downtown. It's outside of that.
Is that like a car got put in front of my driveway for over forty eight hours?
Yeah, I mean, they 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 stem from that to, hey, this car has been out here a month. Or, you know, a car got dropped off, now there's no wheels on it, you know, it kind of includes all those bases.
A car got dropped off and there's no wheels on it?
Motor homes, campers, things like that.
Okay. Okay, I'm just trying to imagine somebody dropping off a vehicle with no wheels on it and just leaving it out in the street. So sorry, it just kind of made me laugh a little bit. Um, yeah, I I I think too, one of the things that, you know, I I tell people, you know, I think it's the name too. For me, it's like I tell people, well, call code compliance, you know, compliance is has a softer tone to me than enforcement. Um, and I know that's the name of it, but you know, when I tell people, yeah, call co, you know, call code enforcement, call code compliance and see if we can get somebody to comply. Uh, but yeah, I think there's a, I think you guys are doing, you know, what you can with the uh. With, you know, the 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 staff that we have, but you know, again, my 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 uh concern is that, you know. With all the workload, there's still an ability as, and I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell, that there's a way that we can be proactive. Sometimes just a, you know, a friendly friendly discussion with somebody and we can take care of, had something off at the pass. Mr. Mitchell.
Uh, yeah, just a question for Ryan. With with the additional officer that we just added, how? How far is that gonna get us toward proactive as opposed to reactive? Is it is it gonna? Uh, is it really gonna be able enough to really change the way you do business?
And I think really, you know, half of their time is gonna be spent on the vacant property project. And that's that's fully, you know, um proactive. You know, we've got a few that have been identified, but the majority of them have come from just us going out and finding them. Um, or coming across them through other, you know, agencies, departments, those kind of things. And so the new staff member is gonna be helping a lot with that. And then I think when we hit vegetation season, we'll be able to, you know. It's easy to start the case. The hardest part, like Commissioner O'Donnell pointed out, is, you know, getting that compliance factor, you know, the timeline. Because even if we try to work with the property owner for a couple of weeks, you know, and they don't want to do anything, then we're going to court. That's another two weeks to a month. You know, and if we don't do anything and we deem we need to go and abate the property, that's probably another, you know, two weeks to a month. To get the, you know, warrant, get a contractor to go out, clean the property. So we have done them every year, it looks like. Uh, for the most part, for the last five years or so that I've looked back on, we've cleaned a few properties, you know, that have had those large violations of education. So. We'll we'll.
Uh, a lot of these cases are super lengthy. If uh if someone doesn't want to be do it voluntary. I just broke down some of the numbers for twenty two is with three of the officers and Ryan not taking any case. There's five hundred and thirty five complaints per employee that they're doing, just that are complaint driven. And then with adding it. We're gonna reduce that by about a hundred and hundred and twenty five or so. So. I think our goal is and where we're getting to is we're getting more proactive and being able to do more. Um, is it still, could we do more? I think if we have more bodies, we definitely could do do more. So we're analyzing that. We're trying to understand. Um, we got a lot of new people in code enforcement and so that's our goal.
What about Mr. O'Donnell's concern about, so. My neighborhood seems to have a particular bent on tree removal on the weekends and people don't, they're frustrated because they don't know who to call.
Well, I think the easiest thing for us is if they do call them on emergency, just to get it documented. They can have an officer go out, you know, if they're available, police officers stop by, document at least who's there. And they can forward that information over to us so we can pick up Monday and start with it.
Okay, that's good advice. Mr. O'Donnell.
First thing I do want to say is my past experience, and I'll say this to Ryan and Chief Jim Van and Sean Davis. My past experience with either the code enforcement personnel or the police department has been outstanding. I I can't compliment any of them for that. Unfortunately, some of those key people in code enforcement have moved on and they were great employees, the ones that I had interacted with. There's a disconnect and I want to make you three folks aware of it. And that happened because a neighbor of mine called on a parking problem. He called dispatch, which I believe is handled by county or whatever during the weekend. County referred him to code enforcement. At code enforcement, he gets a message that we're closed on weekend and the poor guy ends up in an endless loop. So that's not a good solution. And yes, we did request a police officer, understanding. And that's a very low priority cause, it should be. But if we can do something to, we need to educate those folks in dispatch that don't just send people to a dead end because. It doesn't bode well for our service levels in the community. It doesn't solve anything. So that's just information for you three gentlemen.
I appreciate that. I can, it's it's interesting because dispatch does dispatch for multiple agencies, so sometimes they. Don't understand what each agency needs to do uh or wants, their priorities. So I'll I'll definitely look into that.
Yeah, Sean, I just think it's education, their staff education for dispatch. Thanks.
Thanks for bringing that up because I had somebody else have that happen to as well. Any other questions? Ms. Heard-Ravich, you have any comment about my comments?
Uh, sorry, it took me a minute to get online. Um, we, I I really appreciate uh Ryan's uh cooperation with planning and. Um, kind of helping us move some of the code enforcement over to code enforcement. It. We did have quite a backlog for a while and um we've got a process in place now where. Um, we send out compliance letters and we've updated our letters to make sure that they're more um. User friendly and makes sense to people and then we follow up with a a second letter. And um. I see that recently the things that we are seeing are not, they're not the type of case that code enforcement can uh start with. So. Um, if someone is uh taking out trees in the natural resource overlay district, it's not exactly something that. Ryan and his team can start with because there's a land use case there. There's a land use uh process. So. Uh, but we've been working pretty closely with Ryan and his team since I got here. So it's, I I think we're making some good progress.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate it because we have a couple of systems that have submitted long lists about sign code violations. That they were getting extremely frustrated about because it wasn't moving.
That was one of the things I was gonna point out specifically that when we talked about, when you folks just gave us another staff person, you're still in training and not even up and out running yet. Um, was the sign code and and us being uh more proactive in in going out and hitting those signs. They do do sweeps for for signs, but that's something that uh we fully expect you're gonna see more of with this with this person.
Any other questions? Any, anything you want to ask them to move forward on? Mr. O'Donnell.
I think you're on mute.
This is an invitation to to either our code enforcement or. Law enforcement officers, if there's any policy changes that you would like to see. The commission enact that would help them do their job, please feel free to come forward with them. We don't, we can't help what we don't know. So that's an invitation to you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, in one of your uh early slides, you mentioned, you showed staffing from other cities. Uh, some of which are using what you call a community service officer. Can you maybe take a minute and tell how does that work? And is that something that we should be considering down the road?
Sure, I'll talk about that. So like uh Lake Oswego, they use the code, or the C S O model, which is community service. So. They kind of are partners with the police department and they go out there. Sometimes they help with traffic control. Sometimes they help with uh any homeless issues. Um, they're more visible driving around, um being kind of like on a patrol. Um, they still take complaints as they come in. Um, they usually drive like a mark unit that says community service. Um, and. They they take sometimes, I know like Lake Oswego, they take low level crime reports. So they're. Out there visiting with the public, they can go out there, if someone maybe has some graffiti. They'll deal with the crime aspect, but then they'll also deal with getting, working with the homeowner or business owner to get that cleaned up. So that's one thing we are exploring. Um, Lake Oswego and Albany, Van, they have a pretty good uh system that we're kind of looking at and seeing if that's something we want to want to take on and model.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, thank you so much for um giving us this great update and uh we'll look forward to uh seeing you all again and uh see how we're doing.
Great, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Conkle, we are down to. Number four, Oregon City Inflow Infiltration Program Service Lateral Improvement Program. Wow, that's a mouthful.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, John, John Lewis and his team will be presenting uh the information related to this topic. Yeah, thank you, Tony. Um, so I'm just gonna share my screen real quick and just a quick shout out to Ryan and. Sean and Jim, they have been doing some great work for Public Works as well. So um, you know, that question about. Community development uh or Public Works, um, the the team that they have today is um is amazing. Uh, best best I've seen. So I really appreciate their work. Is my screen showing?
Oh, we just still see you.
It's weird.
Sean, I can share mine. Oh, that's working. Yay.
All right, there we go. Okay, well, uh, thank you for your time tonight. I'll try to get through these as quick as I can. I've got a team with me tonight. Um, Rob Lee from Leeway Engineering is on, he's gonna be my co presenter. We're gonna tag team a little bit here. I just wanted to acknowledge um Kenny Kennedy Schultz, who's uh new to the Oregon City Public Works team. He's a engineer. Who's been working uh closely with uh Rob and a couple of folks that are on the call, um David Brokaw and Jim Montgomery. They're both with Wallace Engineering. So if you look down at the bottom of the slide here, Wallace Engineering is is the firm that we hired for our um. I N I program management. It's a multi-year um multi kind of phased um uh consulting contract with them. Leeway is a sub consultant and um we asked Rob to participate because he he's uh really got a solid background on this. Some of you may remember Rob, he's spoken to you before, uh at least uh most of you uh or some of you. Um, so anyway, he'll be on in a little bit. Here, I'm gonna take the first few slides, so.
And you're gonna tell us quickly what what Kenneth is doing. Hi, Kenneth, welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Kenny is uh, he's he's an engineer in the Public Works Department. He's focused on wastewater engineering mostly. Um, right now, his focus is on the I N I program. Um, but he's also got a wealth of knowledge, so we'll probably have him. Take on some stormwater projects and who knows, we'll see. Um, as you know, we're kind of a multifaceted team that is small. So sometimes we ask folks to do things that they're not necessarily um had planned to do, but we'll ask them to do it. So. Let's see if I can get this to move forward. There we go. So real quick, uh for those, I know we've talked about inflow and infiltration in the past, but we're gonna go ahead and do a little repeat there. We're gonna talk about some city code. Uh, we we really want to get to this question about lateral replacements and why we think that's important. And hopefully get some direction from the city commission on laterals. Uh, we, and we're gonna talk both about the lateral that's in the public roadway. Um, our main emphasis and reason for this work session is for the lateral that's on private property. We're gonna give you our recommendation and um and kind of a theoretical timeline if we. Uh, kind of get 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 the right feedback that we're looking for. So what is I N I? I know you've seen this or seen a slide similar to this, but inflow is really. Rainwater, surface water that is directly getting into the sanitary sewer system. In Oregon City, we have a. Combined source, uh, no, we don't. We used to have a combined sewer system. Now we have a separated sewer system. So there's uh stormwater that's uh goes into its own collection system uh that's separate from the sanitary sewer system. And then we have a sanitary system. So when stormwater uh in the form of uh, you know, rain ice, melted water, melted ice. Gets into our um our sewer system, either through uh, you know, openings at the surface level. Uh, or through damaged pipelines, um other, sometimes rain drains are connected. Uh, that's that's problematic. And so when we see that happening, um, we have have concerns about it. And really, I think, you know, the the most obvious place where that would be concerning would be at the bottom end of the system where our wastewater treatment plant is located. We have, in Oregon City, we've got a regional wastewater treatment plant down on um, well, it's on Agnes Street, but it's down near the old eighty second, down near. High two oh five and highway two thirteen. That's where the regional wastewater treatment plant is at, that Water Environment Services operates. Um, so that's kind of the obvious place. But in Oregon City, what we've seen is. Our downstream collection system or the pipe network, um, you know, downstream from where all this rainwater or surface water may be getting into. Um, i- it is is inundating that pipe network, right? And most of our pipelines. Uh, are designed to be what we call an open channel flow. So they're not designed to to run full necessarily. Um, they're not pressure pipes. They're um, they're they're intended to run pretty full. Um, but oftentimes, less than half were full, right? In the summertime, they're really not, there's really not a lot of flow in these pipelines. So. When they, when they, when they have inundation like that, they they really can fill up those pipes and create more damage. Imagine a pipeline that's got some cracks and things to it. It's now under pressure because it's surcharged. So that that water can actually exfiltrate, which becomes a problem and deteriorates that pipeline. So. And we've also seen scenarios where those pipelines are surcharged so much that they overflow. And some of you may remember our, um, period of time where we were addressing some moratorium areas. It was a self implied moratorium, but the regulators were watching as well and they were happy to see the city take those projects on. But th- those are the kind of problems that we were dealing with. And while we did do pipe upgrades to some of those downstream pipe networks, it's very, very costly. And in some neighborhoods, it's really, you know, just too difficult to do. So that's why, um, that's a little more about I N I and why we think it's, um, important. All right. So this is a map of Oregon City. It's, um, it's got a lot of coverage. It's not a complete map of Oregon City. But we're showing some of the colored areas, which are some of our focus areas. There's some of our, um, most, uh, I N I prone areas. And we've done some work in the Rivercrest area, a little bit of work in the Lynn, uh, neighborhood or area. These are, these aren't neighborhood maps, by the way. They, they, um, are drainage basin maps. So a little different. But some of them are, um, you know, Rivercrest, for instance, is also a name of a neighborhood, but, um, that's just how we've named the basins. But anyway, we've, so these colored areas are also, um, areas that we've determined are, have a high rate of infiltration, um, and inflow. So they're the focus areas. And these colored areas are also some of the areas that, um, Clackamas County's Water Environment Services has approved as basins where we would qualify for reimbursement, uh, in these basins. But in the areas outside, they wouldn't be qualified for that. So this is kind of our key focus area. Um, reasons why, you know, we were concerned about I N I, some of which I've mentioned, obviously capacity. Uh, in, in these areas, for instance, we have three different pump stations. And so pump stations that are downstream of, um, an area that's got a lot of I N I and it is, are also very problematic for us because, um, you know, they either run a heck of a lot more than they should, or they get inundated and they can't handle all the flow. So pump stations can be a problem. And then I mentioned overflows and backups, um, some of the problems with structural, uh, integrity of pipes and the treatment plant. So those are all, you know, really good reasons to address I N I and why we've been relatively aggressive with our program. I think the city's, um, the city's program is, is starting to, um, get some momentum to it. We're, we're learning a few things. We've been pretty focused on a couple of key basins, as I said, Lynn and Rivercrest. And, um, you know, those were the basins with the highest I N I. So they were, that made sense for us to start there. But, um, we've been able, you know, we've been through a pretty aggressive TV program, been able to focus on the pipes that needed the work, uh, needed the most work. Um, and so that's what we've done. In the Rivercrest Basin alone, um, we've been kind of treating that as our pilot project and learning a lot about, um, how best to approach these neighborhoods, how to communicate well with the, with the property owners. Um, we've repaired over, uh, fourteen thousand millennial feet of leaky main lines, uh, in the, in that Rivercrest Basin. So, uh, pretty aggressive program. It's generally been successful. We have learned some lessons as well. And, um, some of that's got to do with this, these private laterals. As we, you know, spend this money and put all this effort into I N I reduction, we're successful, but we're not as successful as we'd like to be. So that's something. Um, we're currently looking at the Lynn Avenue Basin, which, uh, is basin number eight. So, uh, the tan area in the center here. Um, that's our key focus area. TV crews are out, um, or have been out. They're, I think they're still out. Wallace has done a lot of work to evaluate that. Uh, we've got two projects currently under design. And we expect over the next couple of years, a total of eight projects in that Lynn Avenue Basin. So a lot of work to come for that neighborhood. But again, we are looking, right now our work stops at the property line. So we may do the main line, we may fix lateral connection, we may replace that lateral, but we only replace it as far as the property line. And we just know that that, uh, there's a, a more comprehensive fix there. We've talked to the commission about it before, and I think there was some reservation about that, which we wanted to continue to address. And I think the real reservation was some of the proposals that we brought forth about how best to pay for that. So we're hoping we're going to bring you a, a winning, um, uh, um, recommendation that you will, um, agree to move forward with. But we know the industry standard for removal of I N I is to include those laterals. Um, the biggest bang for your buck is if you can get to those laterals and take care of those laterals. Um, um, that's how you're going to be, you know, most successful. All right. West funding and support. So as I mentioned before, Clackamas County's Department of Water and Environment Services is the region's wastewater treatment plant operator. Um, they have really, I think, um, under their, uh, general manager there now, uh, done some great things out there. They've got a good mission statement. They're, they're definitely interested in taking wastewater and turning it into clean water. And, um, you know, they're, they're doing a good job, but I, I wanted to bring that up because, um, sometimes it seems like we've tripped up over a little bit about the West, um, program and, you know, we've got a long history with West, um, and the county, but, uh, I feel like their mission is good. Their program for funding, um, these I N I programs in the city is, is new and something we're taking advantage of. I think we just submitted a request for over seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, to get back from West. Um, so, um, we, we recognize it's still not perfect. In fact, today, uh, Mayor McGriff and I and Tony, we had a, a little meeting about some, some issues that we would like to discuss with West further. But as far as the I N I program goes, I'm, I'm feeling really good about West and the ideas that they've brought forth, the work that we're doing in the region, um, with West and part of the other partner cities. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge that, um, because I know it, it's, um, it's become, that, that's been a tripping issue, uh, for us and just our relationship with West. So hoping we can, um, focus more on the need, uh, in this conversation. So the, under the West program, they cover thirty-three percent of the qualified projects. And really all of our projects in those basins that I mentioned earlier are qualified projects. Um, we're, uh, we're, we're looking at that program and trying to, Kenny's spending a lot of time on trying to figure out how to maximize the amount of dollars we can, um, uh, get back from West so that the money goes that much further. And, uh, I think that's the intention of that program too. They want us to be successful. And in doing that, that's why they've made such a large contribution to the, um, I N I program. It, yes, it definitely helps them at the treatment plant. Without that, um, we have a lot more, um, to talk about with regard to treatment plant upgrades. It also helps us in our collection system. And we've got a lot of needs in our collection system. Um, so we anticipate, uh, sixty-five percent reduction in I N I, um, if we can take on these private laterals. And that's much better than if we don't take them on. What, what actually happens is when we fix the main lines, um, the, there, that's good. But as, as that, um, lots of times that hydraulic grade line of the groundwater changes, and then all of a sudden it just moves, um, up the hill to, you know, another point in the system where it might leak. And the laterals are usually built to the lowest standard originally anyway. So they are, um, definitely likely. They may still work for many years for the property owner, but they, uh, leak. Um, and so that's why we need to take care of those. So, um, tonight's focus is on the lateral program. And I'm going to, um, pass it on to the Rob here and I'll be back in a few slides. But Rob's going to take us through the next few slides.
Okay, thanks, John. Uh, evening commissioners, mayor, uh, everyone who's, uh, attending this. Um, just a little bit of background about me. Uh, I've been a twenty-five year engineer, um, all focused on collection systems. And I've had the chance to work on probably a half dozen I N I programs in the Northwest, uh, region of Oregon. Um, many of which were under like a regulatory decree to try to reduce the amount of clean water getting into their sanitary sewer systems, which was overwhelming. Their treatment plants were coming out of the ground during big rain events. Um, so why address the private site? And as John mentioned, that's why, uh, one of the decisions we'd love to have this commission to get input on. This slide that you're looking at here shows, uh, what we've seen in the industry and what we've seen here in Oregon as, uh, the effectiveness, the percent removal of all that clean water during those really, really big intense rain events. And how much we can get out depending on how much of the system that we rehabilitate or address. So, uh, the city, uh, if we were to only do the, the manholes and the, the big pipes that the city has, uh, in the streets, we'd see around a twenty percent reduction in those peak flows. If we were to add the, the public portion of the laterals, the, the, the pipe that comes from the home at the property line and connects to the, the sewer main, um, if we're at just that portion that's in the right of way, we'd see that reduction double to around forty percent. If we were to tackle, attack on the entire lateral, all the way as close to the building foundation, the home foundation as possible, we see that percentage goes up to around sixty-five percent. And these numbers are proven, uh, not just throughout the country as I N I has been addressed, but, but here specifically in, uh, Northwest Oregon, in the Lamont Valley. And so that's really important to understand. Uh, the next slide kind of illustrates why these percentages are effective. It really comes into cost effectiveness. Um, the first scenario, we just do the, the manholes and the mains in the street. Uh, we are estimating for Oregon City, for those five basins, I'm sorry, four basins that, that, uh, Wes has approved to be targeted for I N I reduction. Just taking a budgetary cost estimate, we'd see that twenty percent reduction would turn into around twenty-nine dollars per gallon of that peak flow removed. So it's those huge rain events, kind of like the one we got at the end of December. If folks here remember that one, a couple of days right after Christmas, we had kind of had that rain on snow event. And it really wreaked havoc on a lot of city sewer systems. Um, so that peak flow that, that comes through during those, those real intense rainstorms, we get around twenty-nine dollars per gallon removed. If we were to tack on the private lap, the public portion of the laterals, we'd see that cost effectiveness increase. The dollars per gallon removed actually goes down. So you can actually remove more for fewer dollars, though the total cost goes up. Um, and that will drop to twenty-two dollars per gallon. If we were to then tack on the, the private portion of the lateral, the pipe coming from the home foundation to the property line, continue that work all the way to the street and do the pipe in the street as well, that costs reduced to eighteen gallons per, uh, eighteen dollars per gallon of peak I N I removed. So it just, it becomes so much more effective. And just for folks, like frame of reference, it's that idea that you're got a contractor who's already building things. They've already blocked off the street. They're already bypass pumping. They're already coordinating with all the homeowners. And while they're there, they might as well just tack on those laterals. You can see why that cost would go down. So, uh, just by way of refreshing this group on the existing city standards and codes, um, laterals on the private property are installed, owned, maintained by the private property owners. And that's required for the sewer design standards. But this code allows the city the right to go and inspect the private laterals. And if something is found in quote unquote disrepair, the city may assess a fee for the laterals that fall into that category. So, uh, the city has a right to go because they're connected to the public sewer system, they have a right for inspection and even to require repairs and assess the fee, um, if the city decides to do those repairs themselves. Um, so that's a little bit about the, the ability that the city has, um, to go and do some of this work. How about moving that from what you're, what you're justified in doing to actually doing something? So hopefully what I just shared presents the case for the cost savings and the reduction that justifies the need. It's the most cost effective, the, the best use of the city's dollars to try to incorporate private property laterals into your rehabilitation work. Um, and you've got the code and the standards that provide that authority. But the real question before us or the two questions is who's going to oversee that rehabilitation? Um, is that a private homeowners? Is it the city? Is there some other entity? And who will pay for it? So that's the questions that we want to discuss here today. So we've got a few options, uh, for you. Uh, John, if you could advance the slide one. Thank you. One of the major limiting factors is the West reimbursement program that John just described. For the four priority basins, um, that the city's identified, the I N I program right now is estimated to be around thirty-three million dollars, including all the private laterals. The West reimbursement, uh, requirements say that the, the funds must be spent directly by the city. So it's not, uh, private property owner fixes their lateral, city reimburses them and then asks West to pay that one third that they're offering. Um, that's not allowed by the, the way that the program's currently written. So the funds must be spent directly by the city paying the contractors for the construction work. The contracts must be awarded, uh, according to the public procurement rules, uh, preferably competitive bid so that you get the lowest possible cost with the best results. And that the project must be approved by the West's technical advisory team. There's a group of people encompassing West engineers, folks from all of the, the four cities prior to construction. But as John had already mentioned, those four priority basins have already been identified by West as, as approved. So that reimbursement is a really important piece to under, uh, making a decision of, of how is this, how are those two questions going to be answered? Who's going to oversee it and who's going to pay for it? So keep in mind those questions when we think about the West reimbursement. So we wanted to share what we thought were the three primary options, um, that the city has regarding private laterals. First option, city pays the full amount. Second is the homeowner pays the full amount. Uh, because many of these laterals, as John mentioned, built to the lowest possible standard. A lot of them reaching the age, if not past the age of their useful lives. And it's the homeowner using them. So homeowner could pay the full amount. The third is a, a shared cost option. Somehow the city and the homeowner, a program is developed where the, the cost for the rehabilitation or reconstruction is shared. Um, so John, sorry, I actually, I think I jumped, uh, uh, took your thunder. This is supposed to, that was supposed to be you. Why don't you take it from here?
No, that's, that's fine. And I, this was, uh, just for the commission's benefit, you know, this, this was a, a a lot of conversations and discussions amongst our team. It's a pretty large team and kind of diversity of, of ideas and understandings and, um, kind of thoughts on how we, you know, how we both present this and what we thought was right for the city. Um, well, just, uh, not to, um, steal the thunder, but, uh, you know, the city is suggesting a city funded option. I think that West nine, uh, thirty-three percent contribution, uh, helps a bunch in that, um, you know, when we did, when, when back when we set Oregon City's rates back around the time we did that moratorium project, we had, we had, uh, done an analysis based on, on a rate analysis based on a pretty aggressive I N I program, but it didn't have, um, a lateral, um, element to it, the private lateral element to it. So adding another thirty-three percent, uh, funding source to our program, um, meant that the, because our main goal was to get to that sixty-five percent reduction rate was to, well, how do we cover that? Do we just cover it under existing rates and maybe get a little less work done? Or with the, um, West thirty-three percent contribution, we could expand the program to include those laterals. So, um, we went through analysis, an analysis here to kind of look at these. So as far as the residential cost, if it's city funded, there's no cost. Option number two, if it's property under, uh, funded, obviously they've got a bigger cost, um, to bear. And a shared cost is somewhere in between the two, right? Um, project costs, we feel like the city funded option is the most efficient way of getting there because, um, uh, as Rob said, we can evaluate, we can, uh, package those, those, um, projects in an anticipated way, in a bid package, get it out the door. And, um, based on, you know, surely just length of pipe, uh, we're going to see a lower, uh, unit prices. So we think the project costs go down. So we think the project costs go down if we do it this way. It's also just the effort in terms of coordination. While we'll be coordinating, it's a lot more difficult if we were going to try and share the cost and figure out loan management or you know, you know, a shared payment, whether their contractor does it or our contractor, it's just, it just gets more messy that way. Obviously, there's a near term project budget. I think Kenny has got a lot of spreadsheets that show the long term effect of this, but near term. So in the long term, I think it it balances. We see any of these would balance out, but the short term, we're we're going to spend more money upfront by the city. So that, you know, out of the three options, that's one where the cost bearing option would be the most beneficial to the to the city as as jurisdiction. Long term project budget, obviously, if we could spend all the money we had, plus the West money, plus the property owner funded money, if they contributed, that would provide, you know, the biggest budget for projects. But again, we're a little concerned about the impacts that lateral program would be if it were a property owner funded. Equitable, you know, the first two options, the city gets hit pretty hard. And then the second option, the property owner gets hit very hard. In the third third option, it would be shared some way. So we just kind of indicated that one was equitable between both the city and the property owner. Obviously, there's construction efficiencies and project administration efforts, all the things that we think about in trying to deliver these projects on time and on budget. So we 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 count those. We, you know, whether it be trying to find a loan program, trying to work with a property owner on enforcement of the requirements, all those, all those kinds of things. It would, it would really make the program move along much smoother. I think our city overall, especially when we have such, you know, a big sewer projects are impactful to even though they're underground pipeline network, lots of times they have surface implications. And so trying to minimize that is something that we're interested in doing as well. And then, of course, all three of them have some element of qualifications through the West reimbursement program.
So this slide is just for us to talk a little bit about what other communities around Oregon City, what they've been doing when it comes to the private laterals. Probably the closest example to the Oregon City model is a city within Washington County. Washington County, like Clackamas County, has a regional agency Clean Water Services. So they're the equivalent to Clackamas Water Environment Services. Both Clean Water Services and Water Environment Services are West. They do a hundred percent cost of the private laterals for any of the small diameter sewers and the private laterals in their unincorporated areas. So unincorporate Washington County, if West identifies a bad area, they will pay for a hundred percent of the service laterals and all the way up to the the building foundation if possible. And that's what they had just determined was going to be the most cost effective for the region and as opposed to just upsizing piping, upsizing pump stations, upsizing their treatment facilities. Clean Water Services, kind of like West, they have a reimbursement program to their their partner cities. So for example, City of Beaverton, City of Tigard, they're the equivalents of Oregon City. When Beaverton or Tigard or any of those partner cities goes to do I N I work in their areas, in their service areas, Clean Water Services actually pays fifty percent of those costs. Because they also take this approach of of the importance of I N I reduction. So that's just a two large agencies with their partner cities that are trying to address the private side through I N I. These other examples, the last, the bottom three rows there are all programs that have addressed I N I, mostly because they were mandated to. Department of Environmental Quality had regulatory decrees on each of these communities. For Sweet Home, Sandy and the City of Portland, the city, those communities all are paying a hundred percent of costs in order to try to reduce I N I in the most cost effective way possible. But again, they're mandated to try to reduce these peak flows into their treatment facilities. City McMinnville has a little bit of a different model. It's more of a shared cost model, but mostly imposed on the homeowner. And then the City of St. Helens probably has the most extreme opposite where they just said, homeowner, you have disrepair in your laterals, your laterals are allowing too much clean water in. Please fix them, give us evidence that you fixed them, and please pay for them on your own. For those who qualify, though, St. Helens offered a hundred percent, or a zero percent interest loan of ten years, zero percent interest loan. So they set aside a pot of money that homeowners could borrow from. This was again, back in two thousand eight. I know some of the information in the staff report and the the technical memorandum has more details about this if you're interested. But that's just kind of the spectrum of what's been done around the area. Most of the effective I N I work is in falls in those two top two category or top two rows, whether a hundred percent paid for by the municipality.
Hey, Rob. So Clean Water Services has a reimbursement program for its agents. But the Sweet Home model, the McMinnville, the St. Helens model, those were maybe funded through state revolving funds or something, but not, there was not a, there wasn't an overarching agency or treatment, regional treatment facility that paid them a percentage rate.
That's correct. Sweet Home, Sandy, Portland, McMinnville, St. Helens, they all own and operate their own treatment facility. So they are not partnered up with like another larger regional entity, the way Oregon City flows into Water Environment Services Regional Treatment Plant or Beaverton or Tigard or Sherwood flow into Clean Water Services Treatment Facilities. So that's exactly right, John. They're kind of self self imposed, you know, kind of all encompassing sewer treatment. So John kind of spoiled the big reveal, but here is our recommendation as a team is is option one. We think we believe it's going to be the most effective. It takes advantage of the West's reimbursement. But then there are these other two options that that John kind of went through. So I think, John, you're going to share a little bit more about, or the next slide talks a little bit more about that recommendation, if you want to advance to it. I think I might be talking about this, but let me go ahead and then John jump in by if I miss anything. But again, one of the the keys, what we've seen with other communities and what we think is also going to be the scenario with Oregon City is we're going to see a community benefit, even though these basins are focused on on the four basins, it's not throughout all of the city. Ultimately, that's a benefit for the entire community, to reduce I N I, to extend the life of the sewers and then to have lower regional costs as opposed to huge treatment plan expansions. There is a timeframe to take advantage of the West reimbursement. There's no clear timeframe around when that money goes away, when the reimbursement money goes away. So it's available now and we believe that now would be the right time to try to take as much advantage of that as possible. As John had mentioned, if we were to go with a city shared cost or the city does it and asks for reimbursement from the private property owners, that's a tremendous administrative burden to try to figure out how we're going to get payment from these folks or how to share those costs. There's no need for code enforcement. Part of that is the city already has the existing code to be able to do this work. And so really ultimately, at the end of the day, that that last bullet, easier to defend, a city pays for everything than it is to try to force individual owners to pay specifically in targeted areas. And folks may realize from the map that John showed, those are some of the oldest areas in town. So it makes sense that they would also be the areas that are leaking the most. But again, that then concentrates a lot of the surface lateral issues to those those areas as well. So that's our recommendation is that the city enacts a program that incorporates the private lateral rehabilitation with all the public works projects as we move through.
So yeah, we, you know, we've been, we've been making progress. We'll continue to make progress on our pilot projects. We just felt like we were real, we're kind of missing the boat. We're 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 talking about whether or not we should, if if a lateral policy is adopted, if we should go back and look at, you know, these areas that we've already fixed the main lines on and work on those laterals. And so we we, I feel like we've done a great job with the work that we've done. But moving forward, we'd like to take on the main lines, if not in the same project, in a very short timelines thereafter, after we do that. So there, you know, there's just some advantages to trying to get into the neighborhood once and not try to drag that out over a multitude of years. So we'd like to do that. We'd like to see as much of that West reimbursement recovered as we can. And so we'll we'll keep moving. But we're kind of hoping for some buy-in from the commission and get to the next slide. So you know, what service lateral programs, you know, are, is the commission favorable with this? This is quite different than what we presented the last go around. That's a good question. Is there, is there unanswered questions? I mean, this this PowerPoint is was lengthy, but the staff report was even longer. Well, I guess not the staff report, but the memo that was attached to it. So we're trying to get as much information in front of you as possible. We know your work session agenda is pretty full. So you know, do you want a second work session? Do you want to give us, you know, a recommendation now? And what, you know, what, where are you at with as a commission with regard to kind of some of the things that you've seen? And Rob, is there anything else before I open it up to questions that you wanted to share?
No, I don't think so. We covered a lot.
So Mayor, we're
Yeah, do you want to stop screen sharing?
Yes. On it. There you go.
So I think Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Smith reminded me that I think when we talked about this last time, while former Mayor Lyle Smith was here, we had talked about having Public Works move towards the option one, that if we were going to get reimbursed by West, that we would, we would fund that ourselves. And that's what I recall from my notes that we had discussed. We hadn't actually even discussed options two or three because they were proposed before. So am I remembering correctly? Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Smith?
I think you're remembering correctly, and I stand by that decision back when. I mean, there's economies of scale and getting a project done, or is it avoidance of the administrative expense would be a terrible waste of funding. So I'm, I'm, I would favor option one.
Mr. Smith, any, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I remember that that's what we talked about. My concerns are more about the West reimbursement of the thirty three percent and how they figured that out. We know that that's not based on any cities. Basically, we don't know how, Oregon City has put a lot more effort than other cities into fixing its I N I. But that hasn't been considered in comparison with other cities, nor do we know an M B R K has gotten the exact amount of inflow that goes into the West plant from our city to know whether or not thirty three percent is equitable based on the other cities. So I have a feeling that, of course, that once we accept that reimbursement for thirty three percent, we're grandfathered into basically accepting that and making that be the the number that we go with for the future. I've had concerns with less from the beginning. As you all know, we should have never actually had an M O U with West to begin with. And so I have great concerns about that.
Well, I think that ship has sailed a little bit, but I understand your, your concern. Mr. Morrow?
Yeah, that was my recollection of past conversations as well. I would like to continue moving forward with the city funded option. So yeah, thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Mitchell?
Well, that just cleared up one thing. I wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that option one was city funded. That's to be clear. But my question, I do have a question in the policy menu that you memo that you sent out. There, there was a chart and it showed that, I've, I've got it up here, I got to look at it again. On the property owner funded actually removed two point seven million gallons compared to two point one billion gallons on city funded. And I'm, I'm just questioning, why does the funding method make a difference in how much I N I water is going to be removed? I didn't quite understand that.
I'm, I don't have that in front of me, but maybe Rob does. But my recollection is it's got to do with more of the total program and the ability, you know, how much funding is is available to be spent. So there's, if if it's
I can go ask this John if you would like.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Kenny.
So yeah, I'm the one that ran all the budget projections. And for all of these options, I evaluated them all against an identical city budget, approximately twenty one million dollars over five years. And so what varies with these funding methods is what other funding is coming in? You know, are we getting additional West reimbursements because we're spending money faster? Are we getting additional money from our ratepayers because we are having them pay for part or all of the lateral? And so what winds up happening with option two is that the overall budget increases pretty dramatically because a good portion of that fifty three point six million dollars is coming from property owners. And so the reason we're moving so much I N I with option two is we're basically basically offloading approximately a third of our cost off onto the property owners. And we've had a lot of discussions already about how that may or may not be the most equitable approach to solving the city's problem.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense now.
Okay, any, anything else? I thought it was very thorough and very explanatory, although Mr. Mr. Lewis, I think you didn't put in a fee there, or don't we have a special inspection requirement by the Oregon City Police Department? I didn't see you put any reimbursement in for that so that you can compensate that department for their services.
I didn't miss it. They, they, they provide that service for free, Mayor. So it's a complimentary service from the police department to help with the sewer. What is it? What is it that they're responsible? What is Chief Van responsible for?
He is.
Boillets and connections.
Oh, okay, good.
Right. I thought, you know, as being as generous as you are, I thought you might be able to put in a little reimbursement for the extra service.
Oh, he does it out of the kindness of his heart. Thank you. Thank you for your feedback. John, John, you have what you needed. It sounded like there was consensus around option number one. And will, are there, what are the next steps from your, your point, your position? Well, I think we've got the code to do it. We don't need any, any action from the city commission other than this. We'll, they'll, they'll have the authority over any contracts we issue, but we'll, we'll just move forward with the scoping our projects to include the laterals. And of course, we'll be doing a lot of neighborhood outreach.
I will endeavor to get the, get a comment back regarding Commissioner Smith's question when I have my next West meeting. So all right, so we're on to city manager report.
Thank you. The one item I did want to bring up more as a a reminder check in and if there are any concerns, hopefully we can discuss them. As you may recall, several months ago, all the city commissioners participate obviously on urban renewal. We received a request and then a presentation from Summit Development concerning utilizing city staff to assist with identifying potential grant funding opportunities. And the direction was that city staff really wouldn't, we would not be doing the work. We would be available as time allows to answer questions, review.
Uh, we would be available, um, as time allows to answer questions, review information. But the Summit Development would be doing, um, the majority of the work related to preparing any federal ask or identifying any funding sources that they could potentially apply for to help offset some of the infrastructure costs on the proposed project, the Rossman landfill. Um, since then, we've met, I've met, um, and the economic development manager have met a couple of times with Summit Development as well as with Clackamas County, um, in looking at what those funding options that might exist are, are out there and how realistic they are to achieve them. Uh, so one grant, uh, opportunity that's been, uh, identified is called rebuilding American infrastructure and equity. It's called the RACE Grant, uh, through the federal government. Um, Summit has prepared a, a, a grant request for infrastructure specifically, um, on Washington Street and Abernathy Street as part of their land use approval. They're required to build a half street plus ten, plus the needed infrastructure, the bike pad, the sidewalks, et cetera. Make a complete street there as we would with any typical develop, environment development. Uh, so they are preparing a nine point six million dollar grant that would be, that the city would submit. Um, if we are successful, Clackamas County would manage the funds, uh, to complete those, those, the projects, uh, depending on what's approved through that grant process. Uh, the grant is due at the end of February. Um, so I just wanted to bring it up. It'd been a, a little while since we've kind of talked about the work that we've done trying to identify additional funding sources, um, for that potential development project. Are there any questions related to that?
Yeah. Have general, uh, consensus on, uh?
I think Commissioner O'Donnell had a question.
Okay, where, where is, oh, there you are. Sorry.
It wasn't a question so much as a recollection that we had that discussion. It was about pursuit of a brownfield grant. And it sounds like, and we had always said that our city staff can take a secondary or tertiary position, uh, with the county leading that charge to pursue those things. We didn't think we had the bandwidth or manpower to do it ourselves. It sounds like this grant, obviously, e- even if all the work's going to be done by Summit, it sounds like one of the requirements must be that the, the pursuit of the grant must either be through a governmental agency or a tax exempt or a Native American agency. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Yes. That's why they're requesting that the city submitted, um, for our.
What's our obligation if we're successful in, in that, in that grant?
Um, it, it's part of it'll depend on what, what's approved as part of the grant, but there will be conditions associated with, uh, completing that work. So there is going to be, you know, whether the, the work is done through a grant or if there's no grant in the work is, is done, we're, you know, we're still going to be reviewing plans. We'd still be doing inspections. Uh, so there will be those requirements. There are going to be, um, auditing, um, you know, fulfilling the grant conditions. Um, so we would need to work that out with Clackamas County as to how we would accomplish that. So we would, there, there would potentially be some additional, uh, tracking of those funds, how they were expended, certification of the, the work is complete. Um, if those funds were not available and the project moved forward, um, you know, we would still be doing inspections, you know, certifying off on that the, the project is complete, built to our city standards. So, you know, the addition is the additional tracking that whatever that may be of the requirement of the grant to show, um, compliance.
Well, I presume that you do not need to be the landowner to apply for this grant, and I, I recognize its value. I do remember and I had asked, and then I think it's appropriate that if we can meet with Summit under, uh, the auspices of attorney client privilege and maybe go over their funding, I think it still has value and we can have that discussion separately.
Thanks, Tony.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other commissioners have a question or, or do we have a, do we have your support to allow the city to apply for this? Knowing we're just, we're just going to be the, uh, agent of the application and the county is going to be managing it. Mike?
Yeah, I, I do have a question. So are we talking about what you just laid out in terms of Summit basically doing, uh, creating the grant? The county administering it, the city applying, um, are we saying that, uh, and I would support, uh, that model, that we have more of a blanket understanding or blanket consensus that we can, that they can go forward on those ground rules for any grant opportunity that might come along, not, not just this particular one?
I was trying to be a little more proactive in terms of if, if another opportunity pops up.
Right. Where the county is going to administer, Summit's going to create the grant, the city would be the submitter. So I'm, I'm just asking, are we talking about this, this one particular grant?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that was to me. Um, yes. So this is, this is the only one that I'm aware of that, that, that is moving forward with, um, a, a certain date of when it needs to be applied. Um, if the commission is agreeable that if no, another opportunity comes forward, that I'm, I'm, I can move forward provided, you know, we're the submitter, Summit produces and the county manages the federal funds if another, another grant opportunity comes forward. So I'm sorry, I, I was, I wasn't sure that was directed at me.
Yeah. Well, that, that's kind of what I'm asking for. It, it's that more blanket.
I don't think it's a blanket, Tony. I think, is that the question you're asking? Is it's a blanket approval?
My, my request was not a blanket, but if the commission would like to give me one, um, I could do that. Or I could bring them back individually. It's up to this commission.
Go ahead, Mr. Morrow.
Thank you. Uh, if it's under the same hierarchy that has just been outlined, I would be fine with a blanket approval for them to, uh, request more funds. I think we should be supporting any opportunity for them to get non-urban renewal dollars.
Mr. O'Donnell?
I, I would just want timely notification of the commission if that was in process.
Right.
Um, I, I do remember I felt that we somehow there was a delay in applying for the initial brownfield grant when it was ten million dollars, subsequently reduced to whatever, two or two and a half. And the issues associated with that, it sounds like this model is trying to overcome those issues, which is who the applicant is and who the qualified applicants are. So I'm, I'm okay with it with timely notification of the commission.
I'm, I don't have any problem about this one, but I, I, I'm not giving, I don't want to give a blanket approval. I still want to know, I still want us to know about it. And even though you're talking about timely approval, I think it's within our best interest to review each of the proposals if the city manager brings them to us just so we can, we can either bless it or say no.
I can go either way.
Yep. Right.
Um, I agree with the mayor. This is, I think we should have them come to us.
So for.
Have Tony bring them to us, Rocky.
So for, so for future ones outside of this one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's, it's helping us, uh, stay in the loop and also maintain our, you know, fiduciary responsibilities to the public. Let them know that we are working with them to move forward.
Okay. So I will, I will let them know that we'll be, um, helping them to submit the, the RACE grant. And then any future ones, we'll make sure to coordinate, uh, presentation to the commission.
Yeah, if it warrants one, because you could be the presentation. All right. So on to commission reports. Mr. O'Donnell, you want to tell us about the upcoming South Fork Water Board meeting that we're going to have tomorrow?
I can do that. Actually, uh, I spoke with our fearless leader up there, Mr. Parno today. And we're going to hold that first person, in, in-person meeting for the first time since the pandemic, which is good. Uh, there's going to be a discussion about our support, and that's all it is, is support for West Lynn, who's been placed in position of having to replace the water line to service them across the two oh five bridge, uh, probably ten years earlier than they would have. So it's just going to be a letter of support. And we'll discuss the specifics of that at the meeting. We have a chemical feed building project that's going to go out, bid, bid in about March or April. The design work is done, and of course we'll deal with whatever the current supply chain issues are. And we just recently performed maintenance work at the intakes on the Clackamas River, including divers and dredging. And that's also, that's simply to keep the screens clear of winter debris. So other than that, we'll see everybody tomorrow night for our South Fork meeting. Thanks.
Commissioner Morrow? Oh, excuse me. Yes, sorry. It's good to you.
Oh.
Mr. Smith?
I have no report.
Right? Uh, Mr. Morrow?
Uh, thank you. So, uh, last night we had a CIC meeting where we had a very lengthy discussion and Q and A with, uh, Seth from Summit Development. And I think there was a really engaged audience there that was, uh, interested in hearing more about this. And so that was good. Um, and then another just positive update on the Neighborhood Association front is that, um, a lot of complaints I've been hearing have been related to finding community meeting spaces that are after hours so that people who work can actually attend these meetings while at the same time not having to pay, uh, an extraordinary cost, uh, on a limited budget to, uh, reserve these spaces. And so I just want to give a shout out to our library and Parks and Rec staff for being, uh, really accommodating for that. I've heard a lot of positive comments from them last night regarding that matter. Um, C four, we met last week. Um, the, we talked about the RTP call for projects that, uh, our city commission has previously discussed and approved. And so the next thing that happens is it'll go to C four Metro for an advisory vote. And then it comes to C four for, uh, for our approval there. And so, uh, I'll be watching out for that. And then we did hear a tolling update, uh, from Jamie Stasny, who's with the county. Um, I will note that everyone was clear to say, I'm with the county. I'm not with ODOT. And I think that speaks to a bigger problem that ODOT has garnered a reputation of, um, their communication skills with, uh, our local cities. So, um, it was a very informative, um, presentation about tolling and, uh, where we are. The environmental assessment is going to be dropping here soon. And so that's going to have a whole wealth of information for us as we move forward. Uh, and then lastly, for the tolling diversion subcommittee, I was not able to attend, um, this last month. So Commissioner Mitchell was there, uh, in my stead, and, uh, I'll give him the opportunity to speak about that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, Commissioner Mitchell?
Well, I think I basically already reported on, on that, um, meeting that Commissioner Morrow referred to. And, um, again, basically it's, um, they don't have answers for our main concern being the, the, uh, the arch bridge and, and Main Street. Um, and frankly, as, as we all know, their concern is two oh five and really minimal concern, it seems, uh, on diversion. Which is certainly going to be problematic, um, especially if they go forward and just pull the Abernathy Bridge area and what that'll do to downtown. But, um, you know, we'll, we'll see where that goes. But, um, and I do have, uh, C four Metro meets on the fifteenth. I don't know whether we'll see, I haven't seen the agenda. So I don't know if that, if the regional transportation project roll up will be on that agenda or not. But, um, I know that current list is, um, unbelievably long and well beyond what this region is going to be able to ever fund even out through the twenty forty-five timeframe. It's, um, yeah, it's, uh, as County Commissioner Savas said, that this is a, it's a plan that's doomed to fail. There, there simply can't be the funding to do everything that's on that list. But we'll see where it goes with C four Metro and then we'll see for.
If, when your permission, I'd like to tack on to that, uh, regarding I, I tolling. Some of you are aware that, uh, thank you, Mr. Lewis, again, uh, John and I appeared on, uh, Think Out Loud last Wednesday talking about the issue. And I will tell you that my, um, email on my home phone blew up in a positive way. We have support all the way over to Newport, Lincoln City, Fairview, Gresham, you name the town, Albany, uh, elsewhere, people who, um, were in the, um, public broadcasting arena, listened and basically, uh, supported us. I, the people that I did contact, I urged them to contact their legislators. Um, and, uh, Tony, that report that I sent to you, so I was, uh, another colleague from work, uh, an economist sent me a copy of a, an economic analysis that, uh, apparently ODOT put out in May of last year that we have not seen. He had to make a public records request to get it. So it talks about the, uh, I haven't finished fully reading it, but the bottom line is, is that there are definitely, uh, they recognize in the study that it's going to crush downtown and break the cities, about what I want to say. So I will make sure the city manager sends that out to all of you if you're interested in that. And then, um, the other thing with, uh, to I've two oh five tolling is that, uh, in addition to citizens, I've had, um, a number of, uh, fellow council people, commissioners from other jurisdictions reach out as well. So, um, the ground swell is, uh, rising and I've gotten lots of good reports. And again, thank you to John Lewis for, um, sitting in on that with me. Um, we kind of tag teamed and answered all their questions. So that's all I have to report on that. Um, uh, we will be having a, um, West meeting. They're going to be doing some like luncheon learns, which are not totally related to sewer and stuff. It has a lot to do with the, the SOL program that they're in. The other thing that is coming up is that, um, they started talking about this, um, capital improvement plan, but, um, nothing substantive to the group. And so that's, uh, referring to the com, conversation that, uh, Mr. Lewis and I had this afternoon with regard to some of Oregon City's issues and concerns that are not any different than the ones that, um, Commissioner Smith brought up. So, um, downtown, um, Oregon City Association, we've added two new board members, um, both downtown business owners, which I hope will, um, help with, uh, community engagement. Uh, the impact meeting this last month, um, I was elected as second vice president. Apparently they, um, have to have somebody from Clackamas County, somebody from Washington County, and somebody from Multnomah County. So the new chair is, uh, 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 from Multnomah County. And the second first vice president is from Washington County. I have no desire to take over that committee. So I said I would do this for a year and that is it. We are talking about the regional transit plan, which of course, um, completely negates the fact that there's crappy service to the local outlying communities like ourselves in Happy Valley. Uh, Councilor Sherman from Happy Valley continues to bring up over and over and over again that the transit system has basically failed the outlying communities. Um, the other thing we talked about was the regional solid waste plan. As many of you know, I was on a citizen committee to site a new, um, commercial waste facility. They, uh, decided to bail on Jennifer Street because of some environmental concerns. And I really hope they're not starting all over with this process, but it's, uh, I hope they build on what they've already done before, not starting all over. But we talked about what we need in the area for waste and bring up, um, uh, the need for regional solid waste program as companies like Ridwell, who are taking waste that people are throwing away. And, uh, they got a little, they got a little testy with that. It's in Portland and there's some areas of Washington County that had it. And I said, well, we need to have it over here as well. You already got the South Fork Water Board and then Willamette Falls and Landings Heritage Area. Uh, we had a retreat on Friday all at Shampui. And two things came out of that. One that's most related to us is that the, uh, organization has decided to continue to pursue the national heritage designation. Also, we discussed possibly expanding the state heritage area, which I already thought it was pretty big. I thought it went from Lake Oswego to Butteville, but apparently it does not. There are two separate areas, our area falls and then the Butteville Shampui area is a separate state heritage area. And I said, that makes no sense to me. They really need to be co-joined. So we are going to engage in some conversations with the State Parks and Recreation, uh, Commission and see what they say about it. And, uh, the other thing is that we started discussions about expanding the representation on the board. Of course, one of the questions that got brought up is why are there not other tribes on here? And of course, that was not controversial because one of our tribal representatives was not, was not there of due to some family constraints, but I expect that's going to come back around and, uh, we see where that, that goes. Um, the other thing that came out of that as well, since Russ Axelrod is one of the officers of the Locks Authority, I asked him and our chair, Christine Lewis, about representation for Oregon City on the Locks Authority, because if we're. Because if we're paying into this, we should have a seat at the table. And that's basically my report. So do we have any other reports or anything else that uh people want to bring to our attention? Because we're going to, we're not quite well, we're going to miss a world record, but we're getting close. Anything else, gentlemen? Thank you to staff for all of your reports. We appreciate it, and you guys did a great job. And we'll look forward to uh, oh, I did, yes, did everybody get the invitation about the um February twenty-third Clackamas Cities Meeting in Happy Valley? I didn't realize we were having this every month. I thought we were just doing like every other month, so. Sending out the invites and who's in charge of this thing, but maybe between Angelique and, and Jacob, we can figure that. Mr. Gockel, do we have anything else, or can we, um, can we move for adjournment?
I think we can move for adjournment. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?